The Planning Board will start off the meeting with their items. If you wish to speak, please give your name and your residential address at the microphone. And at this point in time, we'll start with the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with Article 48. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to rename the Board of Selectmen as a Select Board herein in, for the purposes to replace the words "Board of Selectmen" or "Selectmen" with "Select Board" and "Select Man" with "Select Board Member." And to authorize the town clerk to make non-substantive ministerial revisions to ensure that gender and number issues in related text is revised to properly reflect such change in title or take any other action related thereto. This is really a Board of Selectmen article. Are there any comments? I don't see any comments, so we'll move on. Excuse me. Article 49. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map of the town of Wilmington by rezoning the following parcels to neighborhood mixed use as follows. It is shown on a plan entitled "Proposed North Wilmington Neighborhood Mixed-Use District", available for viewing in the Office of the Planning and Conservation, or take any other action related thereto. Rezone from General Industrial to Neighborhood Mixed Use. Map 79 parcels 2930, 31B, 31C, 31D, 31E, 31F, 31G. Rezone from General Business to Neighborhood Mixed Use. Map 79 parcels 10, 11, 28. Map 88 parcels 13. Map 89 parcels 6A, 7, 8A, 10, 13A, 13B. Rezone from General Business to Neighborhood Mixed Use. The portions of map 89 parcels 8 and 9 that are zoned General Business. Valerie, the Planning Director will give an overview of the proposed article. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. The area, well, before I get into the article for anybody watching at home, we do have the text of the articles and the map for this article posted on our department webpage. So you can pull that up from the town's website. And everyone should see, there's a handout in the back with the map on it. And the area to, that's proposed to be rezoned is the, is an area along Middlesex Ave., 62, from Waltham Street to Lovers Brook, right around Eli's. And on that handout, you'll see the area to be rezoned in a, outlined in a dark purple outline. You also see that the existing zoning districts are shown on the map. General Business is marked GB, and it's in a green color. And the General Industrial is in blue and labeled as GI. So I want to draw your attention to, there's a parcel in the middle of the map that's, that's labeled CB and is not included in the outline for the rezoning. That parcel's zoned Central Business, and it wasn't included at this point because it's already zoned for a mix of uses, including housing and retail. That's the, where the RMV is. And the Central Business District actually allows for less setback, especially side setbacks, for buildings. So to rezone it to Neighborhood Mixed Use would've made that Dunkin' Donuts building non-conforming. So it's not included at this point. I want to draw your attention to a parcel on Shady Lane Drive that is shown in green, General Business, for Shady Lane Drive. That parcel's not included in the rezoning. It's a single-family home, so it's probably more appropriate, appropriate as a residential parcel. So the, the plan is to get in touch with the owner of that parcel and talk about a future rezon to a residential district for that. So now that you have looked at the map, you're oriented, wanted to go over some of the allowed uses in the existing districts. In General Business, uses range from retail and banks and restaurants, offices, to gas stations, car dealerships. In the General Industrial, allowed uses include warehouses, contractor yards, and light industrial uses. So this area has really long been envisioned as a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly node of activity, almost a village-type of setting or small downtown setting. And that was outlined in the town's master plan. Uses like retail, restaurants, small offices, townhomes, apartments were outlined for this area. And design standards were also recommended by the master plan to make sure that development required parking to be on the sides and in the back so that the front could be a pedestrian-friendly area. And the master plan also talked about the industrial spaces in this area being redeveloped as office space or incubator space. So what's being proposed is a mixed-use district, the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, which would allow retail, restaurants, office, banks, apartments, condos, but it wouldn't allow those car-related uses. It wouldn't allow warehouses or contractor yards or light industrials. Existing uses would be grandfathered, they would have grandfathered status, so they could remain, but they wouldn't be able to be rebuilt as those uses. So under the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, buildings would be allowed to be up to three stories, the same as the General Business Zone currently allows, and actually less than the General Industrial, which can go up to four stories. Planning Board special permit would be required for housing use, apartments or condos. And design standards are proposed as a separate article, actually the next one we're gonna talk about, and it, that article's outlined on the other side of your handout. Those design standards, the goal of that is to ensure that mixed-use development creates active pedestrian-friendly streetscapes with the storefronts on the ground floor and the other uses above and behind. And those are not proposed as guidelines, they're proposed as requirements that would have to be met unless otherwise approved by the Planning Board through the permitting process. The front setback in the district is 20 feet, which would allow for a wide pedestrian zone, wider sidewalk, and the potential of outdoor seating. So the context for this zoning proposal is that industrial areas in town are being sought out for warehouse use. The majority of development that the Planning Board has seen over the past couple of years has been for warehouse, industrial space, and that interest seems to be steady or growing. And a, a new warehouse was approved for the Textron parcel just recently, where I think a lot of residents saw something a bit more creative and active is what they would've liked to see there than a warehouse. But the zoning there is industrial, and our General Industrial Zone is where we allow warehouses and we even, you know, encourage them. So considering all of this, the, the timing seems to be right to propose this rezoning, especially when coupling it with the creation of design standards, and the goal is to allow that vision that's been expressed for North Wilmington for quite some time. And Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions through you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 50. Article 50, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 6.4.4.1 of the zoning bylaws by inserting the underlying language and removing the strike-through language as follows, and to amend Section 6.4.4.2 of the zoning bylaws by inserting a new section, 6.4.4.2.A, as follows, and renumber the remainder of Section 6.4.4.2 accordingly, or take any other action related thereto. Excuse me. 6.4.4 Site Design Standards. 6.4.4.1 General Regulations. Site design and construction standards are intended to ensure that further consideration in all districts will be given to the natural resources and characteristics of a site, to its topographic and geological conditions, to public convenience and safety, and to the attractiveness of a proposed use on a site. Design and construction shall minimize, to the extent possible, the following features: encroachment within any wetland or flood plain; area over which existing vegetation is to be removed; earth removal in volume of cut and fill; great changes that are not in character with the surrounding area; points of traffic conflict, both pedestrian and vehicle, and amount of impervious cover, especially in aquifer areas. Design and construction shall maximize, to the maximum extent feasible, the following features: citing multi-family, commercial, and mixed-use structures so they relate to the street in a pedestrian fashion, creating a walkable, inviting, active streetscape with parking in the rear. Streetscapes should include bicycle amenities, shade trees, and wider sidewalks for pedestrian activity and outdoor seating; low-impact development techniques employed to manage stormwater runoff; shade trees and parking areas to combat heat-island effect; landscaping buffers abiding single-family residential areas; use of native plantings that are drought-tolerant; connections to any existing trails or sidewalks to create a walkable network; screening HVAC equipment from view; maintenance of existing rates of runoff from the site; preservation of existing flood storage capacity of the site; phased construction with detailed erosion control measures; preservation and maintenance of existing site fees, particularly existing vegetation cover, and ongoing maintenance of the site's land and water resources. 6.4.4.2 Site Design and Construction Standards. Building and site design in the Central Business District and Neighborhood Mixed Use District. Development in the Central Business District and Neighborhood Mixed Use District should provide a mix of uses similar to a downtown or village center, where storefronts are located on the ground floor to create an active pedestrian streetscape. The following design standards shall be met unless otherwise approved by the Planning Board through Site Plan Review. Site design shall focus on pedestrian experience and provide pedestrian connections and amenities within the front setback, including walkways, seating areas, benches, lighting, and landscape. Parking and loaning areas shall be hidden from view, located in the rear of the building. Parking areas shall include delineated pedestrian routes of the building. Streetscapes shall provide bicycle amenities, shade trees, and wider sidewalks for pedestrian activity and outdoor seating. Buildings should be designed with architectural details and shall relate to the street in a pedestrian fashion, creating a walkable, inviting streetscape with active storefronts. This article includes updates to reflect current development standards and include a new section to provide standards for development in the town mixed-use districts. The goal of this new section for development in the Central Business District and Neighborhood Mixed Use District is to achieve attractive mixed-use pedestrian-friendly environments that were envisioned in the town master plan. This type of village-style development has been described by residents as desirable for decades but has never been inserted into the zoning. So that's basically the Planning Board's goal. Any questions on this article? They're getting it easy on me tonight. All right, Article 51. To see if the town will vote to amend Section 3.8.14 of the zoning bylaws by inserting the underlying language as follows, or take any other action related thereto. 3.8.14 Pet care facilities in a General Business District, Highway Industrial District, Neighborhood Mixed Use District, are a General Industrial District, shall be allowed only by special permit from, from, from the Planning Board, and further only upon Site Plan approval by the Town and Wilmington Planning Board. Pet care facilities shall also be subject to the following minimum special permit criteria. Use to be allowed in the General Business District, Highway Industrial District, Neighborhood Mixed Use District, are a General Industrial District only. Pet care facilities shall have a minimum of 3,000 square feet of area, inclusive of all floors dedicated to any use allowed by this section, and exclusive of any exterior area. Such use shall be subject to any and all rules and regulations, as may, from time to time, be promulgated by the Board of Health and further subject to the approval of the Health Department. This is a correction that the Planning Board moved forward with, when, when the section was amended last year to allow for pet care facilities in certain industrial district, Neighborhood Mixed Use Districts were included in the first paragraph, not in the second paragraph. It's really just a housecleaning item. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 52. Article 52, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section 6.4.2.5 in its entirety and replacing it with a new section, 6.4.2.5, as follows, or take any other action related thereto. Parking lot landscaping. All parking and loaning facilities shall be suitably landscaped. Such landscaping shall be designed to minimize the impact of a parking area upon adjacent property and within the lot by the use of existing vegetation to the extent practicable, and new native drought-tolerant trees and shrubs, walls and fences, or other landscape elements. Native shade trees shall be provided to combat heat-island effect. In the case of parking facilities for more than 20 spaces, at least 5% of the area within the limits of the parking facilities, exclusive of the perimeter, shall be set aside for landscape areas. Such areas shall be provided with a minimum width of 10 feet. Interior landscaping may consist of vegetated low-impact development methods to treat stormwater runoff, rain gardens, bioretention areas, et cetera, and shade trees are also provided. Interior landscaping shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Board under Site Plan Review pursuant to Section 6.5. This article further clarifies the requirement of parking lot landscaping. Per MS4 stormwater requirements to bolster parking lot landscaping to further goals of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP, plan that looks forward to future heat impacts, shade trees, shade trees are required to combat heat-island effect, and the threshold for 5% interior landscaping is allowed from parking lots of 40 cars or more to parking lots with 20 cars or more. Changes to the sections are geared toward encouraging low-impact development and mitigating impacts from pavement. Seeing no questions, move on to Article 54. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter an agreement, the terms of which shall be determined by the selectmen to sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of all or part of the following described parcel, following determination made by the town manager that the land is not needed for any municipal purpose, and in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 16 of the Bylaws of the Inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington, revise and other applicable laws. The parcel being located on Pershing Street and described in the Town of Wilmington Assessors' Records as Map 77, parcel number 7 through 26, or take any action related thereto. Is the petitioner here to speak on this article? Please come forward. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Ryan O'Hall, 24 Lincoln Street. Just a little vote made. 24 years old, I went to Shawshank Tech, Angora, grew up here my whole life. Played town sports all that, graduated 2016 as a licensed electrician. So about the article, what I want to do is grow my family up here and really build a house there one day so I could have the same opportunities I had when I was a kid, grow up in this town. And I grew up in it seven years, I want to, you know, have kids with it one day, so that'd be a good opportunity to, you know, have us live here in town. That's about it.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Does the Board have any questions? Finance Committee have any questions? Planning Board will adjourn to Room 9. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Deputy said, Finance Committee will take up the rest of the articles. First article is number one, and that is the voting that'll take place in April. Article two, to hear reports of the committees and act thereon. Mr. Hull, any, any reports can be done?
So the reports this year that are expected to be presented, one from the inhabitant bylaw study committee, they've been working very diligently on revisions to the inhabitant bylaws, using General Code as a vendor that was hired a couple of years ago, so that is coming to fruition. Also, the Wildwood School Building Committee, as you know from our recent special town meeting, efforts are ongoing to work with the MSBA, so there'll be a report on the status there. The Senior Center Building Committee has been also working on putting together design and feasibility for a senior center, and then finally the Town School Admin Building Committee will report on their progress.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article number three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
At this point, in consultation with the Finance Director, we do not have any unpaid bills. Certainly, if anything comes to our attention the next month, we will bring those forward.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Article four. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen to enter to an agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws, with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2023, for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town, are willing to maintain funds on deposit with such institution, and return for said institution providing banking services, or take any other action related thereto. Any comments or questions on four? Mr. Hull?
This is, as you know, a standard article. Every year, it authorizes the treasurer-collector to engage banks for various services.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article five. See how, how much money the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments, and determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer from available funds, or otherwise taking any other action related thereto. The Finance Committee has held several meetings on the budget, open to the public, and this is basically the town budget. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase and equipping of new and replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items, including any incidental or related expenses, and further to authorize the sale, trade-in, conveyance, or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced, such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager, and to the extent forth, set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, and the Board of Selectmen, as follows: Police Department, purchase of three replacement police cruisers. Mr. Hull?
The request here is for 151,000 for the replacement of three police cruisers. This is a standard practice each year to change out, cycle out the frontline cruisers with new cruisers.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Fire Department, purchase for one replacement ambulance, perform corrosion prevention on tower one body and frame. Mr. Hull?
Okay, I think there was another one in between that, but the tower vehicle, it's a 2010 vehicle, it still has a lot of useful life. Unfortunately, there's some corrosion. The plan is to seek $110,000 to address the corrosion. We expect to have several years of useful life once that's done.
And the ambulance?
The ambulance, the request is $350,000. This would be sought from free cash. The 2017 ambulance needs to be replaced.
Great, thank you. Department of Public Works, purchase of one heavy-duty 10-wheeled dump truck with plow to be assigned to the Highway Division; purchase of one heavy-duty dump truck with plow and sander to be assigned to the Highway Division; purchase of one heavy-duty 1-ton utility body truck with plow to be assigned to the Parks and Grounds Department. Mr. Hull?
In the first case, the 10-wheeled dump truck, we're replacing a 2006 vehicle. The cost is $202,000. The next vehicle is a 1-ton dump truck with plow, replacing a 2006 Sterling dump truck. Cost is $198,000. The final truck is a 1-ton dump truck for the Parks and Grounds, replacing a 2008. The cost is $95,000.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Public Buildings Department, purchase of one replacement aerial platform truck. Mr. Hull?
This is used by the public buildings, replacing lights in different locations throughout town. The aerial piece, there's some concerns about the stability of the bed, so the cost to replace this is $147,000. It's replacing a 2001 vehicle.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the dispatch recorder for the Public Safety Dispatch Center, including any incidental or related expenses, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is to purchase a dispatch recorder for the Public Safety Building. Currently, our emergency 911 calls are addressed through the state 911 system. Our non-emergency calls are not required to be addressed through the state system, so this is to enable us to have a recording system for the non-emergency calls that sometimes become emergencies, and we believe it's appropriate to have this, $45,000 is the cost.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the upgrade of the critical, critical radio communications infrastructure and equipment in the Public Safety Dispatch Center and related ancillary facilities to be utilized by dispatch, fire, and police, including design and engineering costs, and any incidental and related expenses, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is the third year of a three-year plan to essentially replace our Public Safety Communication Systems. It includes antennas. The licensing process was already addressed. A good portion of this final phase will be use or installation of microwave technology that serves as a redundancy for the existing communication system we have throughout the town. The cost is $450,000, and the expectation is to use free cash.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum, a sum of money for the installation of traffic control lights on Route 62 at the Public Safety Building, including design and engineering costs, and any incidental or related expenses, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The fire chief has brought to my attention concerns about the vehicles, emergency vehicles, police, fire, and ambulance, and trucks going in and out, and oft, sometimes the general public is... isn't quite as attentive as perhaps they should be when the trucks are going in and out of the bays. So this would establish lights on either approach to the apron on Church Street. We were able to get an earmark from the legislature through our, the good efforts of our legislative delegation. That was seventy-five thousand to engage the engineering and design, which is ongoing as we speak. This would be four hundred thousand dollars that we're seeking to actually pay for the construction and installation of the lights. We're seeking to draw from free cash for this amount.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Article ten. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the Information Technology Department or continue the replacement of the voice-over Internet Protocol phone system in all municipal buildings and the Public Safety Building, including any incidental or related costs or expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is the second year of a three-year effort to upgrade our non-emergency phone system. Our IT director has taken the lead on this and will be replacing phones, not only in the municipal buildings, but in the Public Safety, again, non-emergency, and the request is for fifty-four thousand dollars.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Article eleven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the construction of intersection signal improvements at Shawshine and Hopkins Street, Lake Street, including design and engineering costs and any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This particular intersection at Hopkins Lake and Shawshine has been identified as a priority intersection to be addressed. Last year, at the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting, Article seventeen authorized twenty-five thousand for the engineering, which has been complete. We're now seeking five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would address the replacement of the existing traffic signals to bring them up to current standard.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of the Frank Kelly Track surface at Alumni Stadium, including any incidental or related costs and expense. Take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
Again, this was a priority to address the Frank Kelly Track. It was last resurfaced in two thousand thirteen. At the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting, forty thousand dollars was appropriated for the engineering and design. The plan this year is to seek five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which would include reconstructing the existing track, resurfacing the D area, and coating and striping the six lanes.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to resurface the teacher's parking lot at the Wilmington Middle School, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is an ongoing effort through our capital improvement plan to address parking, municipal parking lots each year. This year, we're looking to ask the town for two hundred thousand dollars to address the parking lot over at the middle school.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to comply with the municipal separate storm water sewer systems, MS four requirement, as part of the National Pollutant Discharge Illumination System, including design, engineering costs, and other incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The town, once again, this has become a standard request. The town is seeking fifty thousand dollars. We have a permit that we need to maintain in order to allow for appropriate discharge of stormwater. It's part of the Clean Water Act, so work that would include stormwater sampling, catch basin cleaning, and various associated work.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the demolition and removal of existing structure at sixty-four Wildwood Street, including any incidental or related costs and expense or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
You'll recall the town received authorization to purchase the property at sixty-four Wildwood Street. The property has been taken via eminent domain. The town does own the property at this point, and the plan is to remove the buildings that are on the property, and the expected cost is forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand, okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the phased cemetery development, including any incidental or related costs and expense or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The request here is forty thousand dollars. This also has become an annual request to provide upgrades to the Wildwood Cemetery, including addressing the turf, fencing, any roadway repairs within the cemetery.
Just one question, are they going to be doing more columbariums?
That is something, at the moment, that I think we're not looking to do in the near term.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article seventeen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of three thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty cents or such other amount as the town meeting may approve from the Transportation Infrastructure Receipts Reserve Account for the purpose of roadway surface crack sealing, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
These funds come to the town each year. It's been going on now for four or five years. It's generated by Uber and Lyft. You'll notice that the number is appreciably lower than in prior years, certainly with the pandemic. I think people, less folks, have been taking advantage of Uber and Lyft, but ultimately, there's a formula that dictates how much each city and town receives, and the amount this year for the town of Wilmington is three thousand eight eighty-six eighty.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from department receipts or use fees a sum of money to operate the Department of Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
In this case, you'll recall, three years ago, at a town meeting, the town authorized the establishment of an enterprise fund for the sewer division, so now all, the department is funded by the rates charged for residential and commercial folks that are tied into the sewer system. The amount this year that we're seeking is three million five fifty-six two ninety. The largest part of that is the MWRA assessment, which at the moment is, the preliminary projection is three million two thirteen eight sixty-eight. We also have one employee that's funded through this request.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the relocation of an underground control panel at Main Street, Route thirty-eight Sewer Pump Station, including design and engineering costs and any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The town is seeking forty-five thousand dollars here. This would be funded through the enterprise account. You may recall, there was a sum of forty thousand dollars that was appropriated as Article twenty-four at the two thousand twenty-one meeting. The intent is to replace this pump station, which is right in front of Market Basket, essentially. We went through the procurement. Unfortunately, the prices came in much higher than we anticipated, so those funds are still available, and we're seeking to add to that by requesting forty-five thousand in this case.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of approximately twenty-four thousand square feet of roofing at the Shawshine School, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
In this case, Article thirteen at the two thousand twenty-one meeting authorized eighty-five thousand for the engineering design. That is work in progress. The expectation is to request eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the actual replacement of the roof, twenty-four thousand square feet of roof at the Shawshine School, and this we're seeking from the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the design phase to replace approximately nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four square feet of roofing at the Western Community School, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is the next priority roof. Going through a similar process of first requesting the appropriation for design services. Fifty thousand dollars is requested, and then we would expect next year to be seeking the funding for the actual roof replacement.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the design phase to replace two oil-fired boilers with variable frequency derives at the Woburn Street School, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The request here is for eighty thousand dollars, and this is for the existing boilers, which are original to the building, nineteen sixty-three. And so they've served their useful life. This is for the design services, and then we would anticipate coming to the town in the following year for the actual cost of the replacements.
And the cost of this is?
This is eighty thousand dollars for design services.
Is there gas on that street? No? Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of existing projectors with infrastructure, interactive projectors, and classroom sound system at the Woburn Street School, including any incidental or related costs and expense or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is a request from the school department. It's part of their five-year technology plan. They're seeking eighty thousand dollars to replace the existing projectors, which range in age from eight to sixteen years old.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of existing projectors and classroom sound system at the Wilmington High School with interactive projectors and replacement classroom sound systems, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The school department is requesting one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the replacement. Again, this is part of their technology plan. Apparently, a number of their existing projectors are failing and need to be replaced.
How old are they?
Well, the school was finished in two thousand fifteen. You know, so they're end of life, I guess.
End of their term. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement and upgrade of the public address system at the early childhood centers, elementary and intermediate schools, including any incidental or related expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is also an ongoing effort by the school department to replace components of their public address system. Some parts are anywhere from thirty to forty years old. They're looking for twenty-four thousand dollars.
Is the Wildwood included in this?
It was. I'm not sure that, well, at this point, I think it remains to be seen as to whether they will direct funds there.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of network switches at the six elementary schools, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The school department is seeking one hundred and seventeen thousand to replace these switches, which are ten years old, approaching end of life.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of the wireless networks at the six elementary schools, including any incidental or related costs and expenses or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
School department is requesting fifty-four thousand dollars for the replacement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable-related Special Revenue Fund a sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen for the PEG access services pursuant to the provisions of MGL chapter forty-four, section fifty-three F and three-quarters, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The town a few years ago adopted the mechanism for allowing the WCTV to receive funds through Comcast and Verizon, so there's a five percent PEG access fee that users of cable pay, and those funds come through the town. This authorizes the town in turn to direct those funds to WCTV, which really pays for the bulk of their, it's the bulk of their revenue. We're estimating that the amount will be five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the new fiscal year.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article number twenty-nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to deposit with the other post-employment liability trust fund established in accordance with MGL chapter thirty-two B, section twenty, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is an ongoing effort to address the town's other post-employment benefits liability, which is essentially the health insurance. All municipalities across the country are dealing with this. Our existing net liability is roughly a hundred and four million dollars. To date, we have nine point nine million that we've set aside. This is certainly something that our auditors and standard insurers look at. We're seeking one million dollars this year to contribute.
And is that from free cash or?
No, from the tax levy.
Tax levy, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to deposit in the Capital Stabilization Fund, and is as established by vote of Article twenty-three at the April twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-one annual town meeting, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The town is seeking a million dollars to put into this account as well from the tax levy. As of six thirty of twenty-one, we had sixteen million one seventy-one one sixty-six. This fund, along with the free cash number, we're certainly looking to maintain, not only for, as a rainy day fund, but to pay down some of the costs associated with these building projects that are coming up.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to pay the middlesex retirement system in addition to the annual assessment or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The town is seeking to request one point five million dollars. The town is seeking to request one point five million dollars, again, from the tax levy. This is essentially an advance payment, almost as if you, on your mortgage, if you make advanced payments. The town's liability for our pension is roughly ninety-three million. It's supposed to be retired by, I believe it's nineteen, or two thousand thirty-seven. So to the extent that we make these advanced payments, it's ultimately saving us over time.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-two. To see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget from other aligned items of said budget and from other available funds, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is a standard article to address overages that we have in the current fiscal year budgets. We won't have the final numbers until just before town meeting. I would anticipate one category that we'll need to address will be police overtime. As you know, we've had a number of vacancies in the department, and unfortunately, the ability to fill those positions has been impacted because of COVID and the inability to get folks into the academies. So I'm ninety-five percent certain there will be a need to do that. Snow and ice, I think, is holding at the moment. Hopefully, we don't have any late winter storms. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other overages.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-two, thirty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the funding of the Fourth of July celebration, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
We are anticipating a July fourth celebration this year, and as has been the case in the last several years, we're seeking fifty thousand dollars to assist with the overtime costs associated with supporting that event.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Next article, thirty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans' Day, and take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
The request here is for eight thousand dollars, and it pays for the costs associated with flowers and flags in preparation for Memorial Day and Veterans' Day.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, the sum of seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollars each for a total of fifteen hundred dollars for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section nine, Chapter forty, of the General Laws as amended, the leases of the Veterans' of Foreign Laws Clubhouse and the American Legion Clubhouse. Mr. Hull?
Again, this is a longstanding practice that we support both of the military veterans organizations, seven hundred and fifty to each organization.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-six. To see if the town will vote to determine the spending limits of revolving accounts established pursuant to Section fifty-three E and a half of Chapter forty-four of the General Laws and Section twenty-nine of Chapter three of the Town of Wilmington inhabitants' bylaws for the fiscal year beginning Ju-, July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as follows, or take any other action related thereto. Compost bin revolving fund, forty-five hundred dollars. Subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund, two hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Hull?
Again, a longstanding practice to make compost bins available. We sell them at a very discounted rate, and the money goes back into the account. And then separately, to support the septic loan program, if individuals are having difficulty financing the cost of replacing their septic systems, this program allows for them to get a reduced rate, and it's just a revolving account.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the acquisition of interest in land necessary to carry out the Lowell Street and Woburn Street Road Improvement Project, more or less depicted on plan entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Plan and Profile of Lowell Street, Route one twenty-nine, and Woburn Street in the Town of Wilmington, Middlesex County. Pearly Right-of-Way Plans dated five thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, last revised eight-six, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by TEC, containing six sheets, sixteen sheets of said plan may be amended, including all incidental or related costs and expenses, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This has been a project that's been in the works for some, some time now. Public Works Department, Mike Woods and Paul Looney, and also Valerie Gingrich have been very instrumental in bringing this forward, and through our, the transportation improvement program, it's funded in part through federal and state money. The, the expectation is there may be some easements required associated with the work at Woburn Street and Lowell Street. It'll be a major intersection upgrade. There'll be lane, turning lanes and replacement of signals. This authorizes the expenditure of funds for, in the event that we do need to pay for any temporary easements. We do have a mitigation fund that has been generated over the years from various businesses in the area through the planning board that have approved, received approvals from the planning board for different upgrades. So we anticipate to the extent that there are costs associated with these easements, that the funds would come from that mitigation fund and not the tax levy.
Is this the, one of the ones that Analog Devices donated to?
I believe they did.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
How much is the balance in that account?
What's the, what's the balance in that account?
It's about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-eight. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, and upon such terms and for such consideration as the selectmen deem appropriate, permanent and temporary interest in the land abutting Lowell Street and Woburn Street at the locations more or less depicted on the plan entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division and Profile of Lowell Street, Route one twenty-nine, and Woburn Street in the Town of Wilmington, Middlesex County. Pearly Right-of-Way Plans dated five thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, and revised on eight-six, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by TEC, containing sixteen sheets, the plan. And said plan may be amended, a copy of which has been placed on file with the town clerk for public way and public way construction purposes, and otherwise for general municipal purposes sufficient to carry out the Lowell Street and Woburn Street Road Improvement Project depicted on the plan, which purposes shall include without limitation the construction of public sidewalks, curbing, sloping, drainage, installation, and relocation of utilities and other roadway improvements, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply, for, accept, and expend any donations, mitigation payments, grants, or loans in construction, in connection with, herewith, and to take such action, enter into agreements, and execute such documents as, as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of the, this article, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
Again, this addresses the same intersection talked about previously, and it authorizes the Board of Selectmen, as noted, to accept these easements, temporary or otherwise, for the purposes of the construction of, of this intersection.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article thirty-nine. To see if the town will vote to accept the alterations of the layout of Lowell Street, a public way in the town as ordered by the Board of Selectmen, and more or less depicted as the addition to the layout of parcel E dash one on the plan entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Plan and Profile of Lowell Street, Route one twenty-nine, and Woburn Street in the Town of Wilmington, Middlesex County. Pearly Right-of-Way Plans dated five thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, last revised eight-six, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by TEC, containing sixteen sheets, as such plan may be amended or replaced, and as described in that, that the easement recorded with the Middlesex North District Registry deeds in Book thirty-six, one fifty-one, page two-ten, said alteration having been placed on file with the town clerk as required by law, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, and upon such terms and conditions, and such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, interest in the land included within the layout of such alterations sufficient to complete its acceptance, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
Again, still related to the same intersection, Woburn Street and Lowell Street. So once the work is completed, the redesign is complete, this authorizes the board to accept the new layout within that roadway.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter ninety, Section twenty-eight, allowing the town manager to designate or appoint a parking clerk who may also perform other municipal functions except police functions, and who shall be directly responsible to the town manager, and shall supervise and coordinate the processing of parking notices in the town, in the town accordance with the provisions of the statute, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This allows the establishment of a parking clerk designation. We're not looking to create a new position. The responsibilities would be assigned to someone currently with us, but right now, we don't have the ability to enforce parking tickets. So this, by establishing these responsibilities and accepting this provision of law, it would allow for, you know, parking clerk hearings if necessary, and the collection of those fines.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-one. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-nine, which provides that no fee shall be charged for the, for a license of her dog owned by a person aged seventy years or over in the town, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is really intended just to, to benefit residents who are seventy and older. Right now, the cost for registering a dog is ten dollars if spayed or neutered, fifteen if not. That's as of if, if they register between January first and March thirty-first, and then it goes up to twenty-five for spayed and neutered, or thirty for not. These fees would be waived for individuals who are seventy and older.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-two. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter three, Section twenty-eight, in, of the inhabitant bylaws, to name the corner of Arlene Ave and Salem Street as the Richard E. Dick Hayden Memorial Corner, in the memory and honor of Richard K. Hayden, who served his country honorably in the United States Marines, and volunteered for many years in the community, including serving on the Finance Committee, the Friends of the Library, Wilmington Education Validation, and to have a sign installed to commemorate the same, or take any other action related thereto. This is awesome. Dick was good on the board.
Yeah, I think it says much as you described, but certainly Dick Hayden was an honorable and distinguished gentleman. He contributed a tremendous amount to the town through his time on the Finance Committee and with the various organizations in town, and served his country. So I think this is a great honor that we can bestow with the family.
I think it's great, but thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-three. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter three, Section twenty-eight of the inhabitant bylaw, to name the Hathaway Access, Hathaway Acres Conservation Trail as the Officer John Jack McGuire Memorial Trail, in the memory and honor of the late Woburn Police Officer and Wilmington resident John McGuire, who was killed in the line of duty, and to have a sign installed to commemorate the same, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This was actually initiated by a neighbor, Joseph Signa, who contacted me back in the fall, requested that the board support this effort to memorialize this trail after Jack McGuire, as it notes in the article, another gentleman that served both Wilmington and Woburn, in Woburn, in terms of his police career, unfortunately, was killed in the line of duty. His wife actually served for many years in the library, Wilmington Library, so I think this is a fitting honor.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-four. To see if the town will vote, will vote amend, to see if the town?
Vote to amend.
To amend, the inhabitant bylaws to renumber and recapture, the inhabitant bylaws by A, assigning a, a character, a chapter, article, number, to each of the inhabitant bylaws, renumbering each section of each bylaw accordingly, C, inserting chapter, article, section, and subsection titles, and D, updating internal references to reflect the new numbering system. All of set forth in the final draft of the code of the Town of Wilmington dated February two thousand twenty-two, on file with the town clerk, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is one of two articles that are really the culmination of a lot of effort on the part of the members of the Inhabitant Bylaw Study Committee, working with general code, and it's intended to really update the inhabitant bylaws, make them more user-friendly, so to speak, address some of the, not only the grammatical issues, but essentially to organize it in a more appropriate manner.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-five. To see if the town will vote to amend the inhabitant bylaws to make clerical and substantive revisions fully set forth in the document entitled Inhabitant Bylaws, General Revisions, and the final draft of the code of the Town of Wilmington dated February two thousand twenty-two, both as on file with the town clerk, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
Again, part of the same process. There are some sections that were deemed not to be relevant anymore. I would encourage anyone who has any particular questions to go to the website, and there's a full documentation of the changes that are being proposed.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-six. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation to amend the provisions of Chapter five ninety-two of the Acts of nineteen fifty, entitled An Act Establishing the, a Town Manager Form of Government for the Town of Wilmington, by A, replacing the term Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, or Board or Selectmen, appearing in any context where references are made to the entire board with the term Select Board, two, replacing any reference to individual members of the board with a Select Board member, and three, replacing any references to a chairman with the word chair, and further to authorize the General Court to make clerical or editorial changes that form only to any bill so filed unless approved in advance by the Board of Selectmen, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such revisions as fall within the scope, intent, and public purposes of this vote, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
So this is part of an effort to make the revision from the reference Board of Selectmen to Select Board. It was brought up at a selectman's meeting many months ago, the desire to make the change to the title. So it's really kind of a three-pronged effort, one being to make the modifications within the zoning bylaws, second, to make the modifications within the Town Managers Act, which does require an act of the legislature, and then third, to make the modifications to the inhabitant bylaws. So these modifications will be noted in the other article that was just referenced, but the premise here is that should that article not pass, for whatever reason, there would still be the opportunity to make the reference, change to the title through these articles.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Article forty-seven. To see if the town will, will, to amend the town's inhabitant bylaws by replacing in such instance in which they appear, one, the words Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, Board, Board or Selectmen, with such terms reference the entire board, with such term the Select Board, the term Selectmen with the Select Board member, and three, the term of Chairman with the, with the term Chair provided, however, that this by, bylaw amendment shall take effect only if after the special act as referenced in Article forty-six of this town warrant has been enacted, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Hull?
This is the, the final element of that change, so this would be the specific to making the change in the inhabitant bylaw. Again, should the article that was prepared by the inhabitant bylaw committee fail for whatever reason, this would make the change specific to this term in the whatever reason, this would make the change specific to this term in the inhabitant bylaws.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Hmm? Let's see. Article fifty-three. You all have copies of this. I'll just read the first section. To see if the town will vote to ban the use of polystyrene of food, at, at food establishments in town facilities. This excludes, excludes food and goods purchased outside of Wilmington and packaging intended for meat. Food established in town facilities will be encouraged to use biodegradable, compostable, or reusable packaging. Is the proponent here? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
And your name, please?
Laura Tran.
And the address?
Six Flynnway.
Great, thank you.
All right.
And your proposal?
All right. Polystyrene, thank you. Thank you. Polystyrene, more often known as styrofoam to us, is extremely harmful to the environment from its production to its disposal. Its production creates lots of toxic, toxic waste, and its disposal is also harmful because it is not biodegradable, and is, it is what we know as principal litter, which means that it is a form of litter that can be found everywhere. And I would like to discourage the use of it through fines and encourage the use of either biodegradable or reusable alternatives to this material.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
And that concludes the warrant for today. Any questions or comments on any of the items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing closed.